Mike, where'd you go? Here he comes. Okay, I think it's one o'clock.
Looks like it to be.
It's starting on time.
It's four o'clock.
I don't want to get in the back market. Okay, it's one o'clock. This is our regular meeting that we had scheduled. And we want to call the order. Just follow, we have Mike Ridley here. Jeanne McGinnis is here. John Johns is here. Dawn Webb is here. Mike Sherman is here. Lisa Schofield's here. And coming back to our group is Kelly Ashford. So we're all here today, so thank you for coming back. Joining the fray.
May I add, I don't know if you're at Agenda, Public Comment and Agenda, but can I add something to the agenda?
Yeah, you can. It's Public Comment.
That's where we're at.
We're there now, we did well.
I know, but it's...
You're not in public.
Budget. You want to talk about the Planning Commission's budget? Do we have enough money in there to move forward?
No.
We were going to bring that up today. We were talking.
We're going to add it to the agenda. We're all here, so...
Yeah, we'll add it to the agenda.
It's not a special meeting, so you can add it anyway.
Yeah, it's a regular meeting.
Yeah, we were asked a few months ago too by Mr. Kramer to put something in for the budget next year. And he gave me a sample of how to put it down. But we need to talk about what we want to do. Any other public comments? Beth, do you have any?
No, I'm going to pass right now.
You're going to pass? Okay, you're going to save your comments till the end? Okay, first of all, hopefully y'all got a copy of our special meeting minutes from four six. And you could look them over. If you haven't looked it over, it wasn't too exciting, although we did go through the capital improvement plans submissions. And we're going to review those today.
I make a motion to re-improvement.
I second it. All in favor? All right, okay, that's my approach. Okay, now, we want to finalize the capital improvement project.
So in your packet, I'm going to have to clean up the summary sheet, but you have a summary. Basically, it just explains, just read through it, a capital improvement plan as a proposed strategy. If there's something that looks like it should be changed. And then I took the ACT 33, the excerpt for capital improvements, and just embedded it on the bottom.
This pretty much goes along with what the county did, right? Yeah, they... Well, I gave you capital before I go. We have it, but it's somewhere. That's okay.
If everybody's okay with the language, I looked at other townships and counties to see what they... Some of them had a chapter for a summary. Some of them just had barely a paragraph. So I came up with this and thought it looked okay, but anybody else has anything other than that in mind? Or something I should add?
No, I mean, it's... Basically, it's an explanation of what it is and why we're doing it in Michigan. And this probably is required by PA 33 and a six-year capital improvement. And I guess, I don't know if we added this or not, but we were asked by the township board to pull together the CIP. Because normally, in the past, Mike has always done it. And if you read the state laws, it says that it's either the supervisor or the planning commission is responsible for it, and the board...
So, do you want to do that right now? Should we do it right now? So can we talk about the bylaws? So you've got the excerpt down here. And if you look at the excerpt, it says that the planning commission, it does not say the local unit of government shall. And it says the planning commission can be exempted. And in our bylaws, we put the planning commission shall. I want to make a motion that we just change shall to may because it gives the board the opportunity to take that out and exempt us because the law says we can be exempted from doing a CIP.
What line is that on, this one?
So if you're looking at the excerpt down here on the bottom, so it says, in the excerpt, it says, "A planning commission, after adoption of a master plan, shall annually prepare a CIP of public structures improvements unless the planning commission is exempted from this requirement by charter or otherwise." So it says we can be exempted. So in our bylaws, it says we shall. So our bylaws, I think I have those right here. Duties. Our duty, it's under duties, it says, "The planning commission shall perform the following duties," and then there's A, B, C, D, and E, and F. Prepare a capital improvements program. So I want to add the word may prepare instead of having the day shall. So it gives them, they can exempt us because the law says they can.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree.
May annually prepare a capital?
May. And they've asked us to do it. Maybe next year they won't ask us if they don't want to. They may want to hire a firm to do it, which would exempt us, or...
So we need to amend our bylaws to say...
Yes, the bylaws.
We don't need to change anything on this one.
No, because this is actually...
The bylaws were approved in October.
Yep, we can, it says these bylaws may be amended at any meeting by a vote of the majority of the membership of the planning commission.
So I make a motion that we amend the bylaws in reference to the capital improvement projects that we may be...
I'll just put the word may.
But this is only about the capital improvement?
Capital improvement, yes.
Only about the capital improvement. So in front of, so F will read, "May prepare a capital improvements program."
Rather than it's our duty.
Right.
Well, here in the, just correct me if I'm wrong, it says, "For the desirable future development of the local unit of government under the master plan, a planning commission after adoption of a master plan."
Yep, it says shall annually prepare.
Well, I know, but this is, are we...
We haven't adopted the master plan yet.
Do we have it adopted?
Well, right now, we're under the rules of the 2012 master plan right now.
So, okay, so Mike made the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Going back to the initial...
Was anybody opposed?
No.
Going back to the initial paragraph up here, there's a grammatical error, I think.
What's that? Oh, there is, okay.
The CA becomes a statement for potential...
For future, okay.
Add for.
Yep. Anybody see anything else?
When you get a minor in English, after you got your engineering degree, you'd be pretty good with these. You're just like Denny Durst.
I argued with him before about stuff.
No, you're good at this. Denny used to do the same thing. Picking stuff out of lies and, you know...
You get that when you argue with the Israeli arguing guys.
So, Don, do you want with that summary in the spreadsheet, these are all the CIP forms that are listed on here?
Yep.
So I'll give you...
So going back to the bylaws, we're going to correct them. And then we'll send them to the board with the other stuff, right?
No, the board does not have to.
They don't need to approve it?
They don't approve our bylaws.
That's what we just do.
Okay, yeah, okay, good. That's fine. Because I know back in October, we gave it to the board to review. You were on the board too. The bylaws, they reviewed. I don't know if they approved it or not, but it was...
Yeah, I'll send them to them. And Bob will have to put them on the website.
If he wants to, okay.
Sages for your information, so they don't forget.
Yeah, and then you can put it on the township website and replace the one we have, okay?
Okay, so the second, so is everybody good with the front page? We're just going to check. Nobody found any other errors, or...
Okay. Now, everything on this summary page basically is everything that we reviewed except for the River Street progress plan. Is that in there? No?
Yeah, so the River Street, the two that were added were the River Street Bridge stops. Those were supposed to be approved, or that was approved, already approved project for ARPA money. And now we don't know where it's coming from. So that needs, and we got to fix them because they're tore out. And then the River Street Commercial District Road Parking/Parking, do you want to talk about that, Mike?
That's part of the, we learned of River and Lake, so that's part of the DDA. And go down there and create more on-street parking. We're not going to get into the residuals because I think the DDA stops there. I'd still like to get a better idea of what it's going to look like if you've got all this nice wide parking with straight lanes and all of a sudden, in the middle of the block, you cut down to two lakes where it's still going to be open, we're just not paving it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I, when I...
What it is, is that we would participate in this from the DDA because it is in there. And it can be done possibly if, when we get done paying our final bill for the existing streetscape, if we have enough room to take out another loan. So, or grant and loan.
So Mike, this, I started kind of working on this a few months back with Darren Visna. And we had a meeting with, we met the road commission and Mike, Darren Visna and...
Jason Klinowski.
Jason Klinowski, to talk about a special assessment district, which then the township would also participate in for the 10%. The road commission would kick in their $25,000. It would become a special assessment district. At that point, we figured out that the DDA may be able to also participate. So, and it was actually on the DDA's list except there were a list of roads. It was, I don't have the DDA's list, I don't think.
So officially, this come from the DDA? Or this come through the township, or...
Yeah, all up the above.
Okay, all right. I didn't know where the...
Is that a joint project?
I didn't know if we had a owner or not.
So that's why I, and the owner, I put admin DDA. And then for potential funding, it was general fund DDA, special assessment district, and CCRC. So kind of a commission. So those two were added since we met. The rest of them were all that we talked about. The DDA, you want to go through them one by one, or no?
I would have everybody just look at it. And then if they have questions on them, because we went through them at the last meeting. I know Lisa and Kelly weren't here. But, I mean, we can go through each one, but I don't know if we need to or not.
So the first year start, the fiscal years, FY is fiscal year, fiscal year start, I mean, these are, that's when we're projecting that they're going to start those projects. And then FY complete, fiscal year complete, that would be the year that they're going to finish them.
And the fiscal year starts...
So '23, so it would be July 1st.
So just to bring me up to speed just a little bit, what the township asked the planning commission to compile this information for them. And you've taken all of the figures from the township's information, from the police, from the DDA. We're just compiling information?
It's how hard job was to compile it all. They gave us...
And put it in the form of the CIP.
They gave us a form that the DDA, the Parks, the police department, and everybody, all the other...
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what our task was.
Yeah, we had a meeting, I think, the 6th of April. And went through everything that we had gotten from the township, from the DDA, from the Parks Commission, which did not, the Parks Commission and DDA, they didn't follow the format that they had. So we took what they had and we adjusted it to fit the form here. So we had to put those things on there because they were, they had already done their program or projects for six years. And apparently, they didn't want to reinvent the wheel again. So we took it off. We took the stuff from the airport. Janice Mans had some things that she sat down with your brother-in-law Schofield. That's because the Parks Commission wouldn't, didn't give us anything. So she wanted to know exactly what he needed. And one of them was a truck. So she gave us three items off the form. So it was kind of a combination of a lot of stuff that we pulled this off. So we wanted to make sure we had everything covered. Whether it comes out of the general fund, whether it comes out of the sad money, or if it comes out of other funding, we put it on there so the township board will be aware of what's going on for the next six years. They asked us to do that.
And then they, and everybody put whether it was needed or desired. So those were the priorities, was needed or desired. And then we were, this is the first year that they've done this. I would say, based on what we just went through, this needs to start way in advance. Because we didn't get the opportunity to sit down with each one of the groups and go through, through these. We ended up, you know, I ended up like talking to a couple of folks from the DDA because I, after watching, we did, based on the thing that you had, we went through them. And then I'm watching their meeting, listening to them talk about their budget. I'm thinking, these numbers are not lining up.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
It wasn't well put together as far as the process.
This should be happening like in the fall.
Exactly. And they started talking about it in January or February. They wanted it by April 15th originally. So they could get it for the budget. We didn't have everything. And we just said, let's do it with what we got. And then everything start coming together. And like I said, in the next year, whether we do this or not, or they hire somebody, I think we'll spend a little more thoroughly going through this.
Start earlier.
Start earlier.
And have meetings. Because they're, so DDA went through what the list, I gave it to Sue, and she went through and made some adjustments. They made some adjustments to the years when they could start to make sure that they were not signing up. We weren't signing them up for something that there's like no way they could do right.
That's what I feel like. I mean, are we setting people up for failure with some of the, you know, projected costs of things? And we have no idea further down.
The cost came from that.
The cost came from that.
Yeah, from all of them. It was...
Thank you. I like to put that in, you know, I'll...
Yeah, that's fine. I'm glad you're summarizing back.
Did we just invent these figures out of thin air?
Lisa's here too, and she isn't...
None of us is set in stone either.
Exactly.
No.
Which is why I put at the heading for funding, I put potential funding. There may be no funding, and they may have to take it off the list. So...
And I'm sure we would not do the process next year again like we did this year. I hate to say this, but working all the years at GM and Dawn and John, being an engineer and everything Jane's gone through, we would have done it differently as far as being more thorough, spend more time getting this thing together. You know, because to me, this is not the exact science, this one here. I mean, it's something we threw together. And unfortunately, I hate to put my name on it, so...
Well, some of it can't be. I agree with you. Some of it can't be because some of the things, you're depending on grants. When you're depending on a grant, you don't even know if you're going to get the grant. So you can say that, you know, you can say it's spark, but maybe spark doesn't come through. It's hard to, it's like, when I was talking to some of the people that have been involved in a lot of this stuff, some of this happens, it happens tomorrow, and you have to jump when it happens. You can't look at a list and say, oh, it's not on my list. If the opportunity presents itself, you have to grab it and run.
And that's probably going to change too. Starts to get closer to the...
I mean, none of us like that. None of us that worked in the private sector write that. We like things planned.
Exactly.
So this year too, we had the master plan thrown in too at the same time, and trying to juggle both of them. It's not been, so this is the best we can do. It's not what I would say, or Dawn, or any of us that worked on this thing, or knew the right way to do it. But it's, it is what it is right now. And it's better than not having anything. And I think it's got more, we've got more information this year than we had in the past, and more people involved.
Yeah, I think next year's will be a lot easier because you'll have this to work off.
Exactly.
Yep, it'll be just rearranging and...
So it's just, you know, this happened to be what it is. Not exactly the way I would have put it together, but...
When we looked at, Dawn and I both looked at other townships, charter townships, regular townships, at their capital improvement plan and their, you know, books, their bodies. And they resemble the Parks recreational plan or their master plan. And these are documents that were prepared by professional staff and, you know, at the cost of $10,000.
I got a copy of Cadillac by Mr. Kramer. And it's done professionally. I mean, it was beautiful, holly dead. And there are all these different references.
But that cost, that cost money.
I mean, this is not, when we're a small township, we're all volunteers, we're not...
That you would spend on getting this professional document.
If you wanted to do...
Would actually get one of these projects taken care of. And that would make more sense to me to spend that money on something that's what we wrote, versus a book of papers.
But if you want, you know, a document to put on a shelf that says the same thing in many words...
Yeah, I don't know. You need that or not. But again, at least this is something that the board can look at and say, or the public, that this is what's out there now. This is what's ahead of us. Whether it's right, wrong, or different, this is what we were able to pull together at this point. So at that case, I think it's...
Even last night, I was looking at DeWitt, I think it was DeWitt's, and they're about, they're a city. So obviously, they have more tax dollars than we would have. But there are similar sites. They're 4,700 people, right? So I'm looking at theirs, and I'm thinking, crap, I should have set it up that way. And I'm like, I'm not doing this.
No.
You're spending too much. A certain amount of time.
It is what it is right now. And next year, whether we do it or not, it's, you know, I'm sure we'll do it differently, so...
So today, in looking at it, we're just basically looking to see if there's any like spelling errors and typos and things like that.
Where anything you thought we missed, we talked about it. You know, you haven't been here, but we went through everything pretty thorough. We spent two hours in April going through all the stuff that came in. These two here have done a hell of a job, okay?
The thing is, this is going to the board.
So we have to make a motion to adopt it.
Yes, yeah. I want to make sure. But yeah, we'll make a motion. This is what we're going to send to the board, these two pages.
Yeah, and our task after this is complete. And they take...
Well, the only question I have, is there going to be a sit-down with the board and the public with this? Or is it just the board and the public after the...
I don't know.
So at this point, we're just going to send this on to the board, right?
That's all their task.
We'll prove it.
And the forms, the CIP forms that we...
Yeah, the ones you put behind, yes.
So, so essentially, I'm just going to clean this up because I need to fix the title. It's tinier than the, clean this up. If anybody has questions about, we can look at this. If anybody has questions, if everybody's good with it, then we just adopt it and...
Just a couple of small typos, that's all I saw.
Okay, what did you see?
When you're looking at priority desired in the middle, there's one that says federal highway slash local aid. Locals spelled wrong. I'm sorry to be in a...
No, that's...
I know you want to do it, but...
Somebody else than John taking the part.
I'm fine with that. I don't have a problem.
So where it says local aid, there's this extra letter in there. And then I think NABANOY on the bottom left is spelled wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, it's OIS.
It's OIS?
OIS, NABANOY. And then you've got one that says genera.
Wait a minute. A, N, A, N-A-B-A-N-O-I-S?
I think that's how it's spelled.
Okay.
I'll have to go look at Google Maps and see what's...
Okay, where else?
Leave a few errors in there to see if they read.
I just saw genera fund, genera.
Up in that green dock bathroom replacement.
Green dock. Where's that?
First section, fifth line up.
Yeah, spark.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. River Street, so, oh, fifth line up from the bottom.
Yeah, spark, slash genera.
It says general.
No, it says genera, there's no L.
Yeah, it's the L that's thrown on there.
Okay.
Your eyes sees what it reads up most.
You've been reading it over and over and over, doing it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I'm sure you guys went through all the dollar amounts and without the other documents to, you know, like, just to double check. You guys double checked each other when you were doing it, so...
Yeah.
And then this is just a document they're going to look over. And if they want to change the numbers to whatever, they can, they can augment the hour numbers.
Yeah, I mean, they have to argue with whoever the department...
They can augment the years and all that. So yeah, I'm fine with approving it.
So just a question, this factor too, Martha Street Parking Lot. It says it's going to be general fund or land sales.
Yep.
So we're going to sell some land in order to pay for that?
Already have sold Craig, Monte, and GoL. We haven't closed on GoL yet. Or the other ones, haven't closed on it yet.
Okay, so...
But the parking lot outline is on the other side, on the other side of the trail, between the trail and Club Road and Martha.
No, I think it's between Martha. Where's your lot line right there?
Mine goes right close to, right close to where there's a big oak tree there. And it just, it's at an angle back towards, it gets narrower behind, it's wider at the street and narrower at the back of my garage.
How many feet is it for that oak tree too?
No, it's very close.
Very close?
Yeah, the lot line. But then if they're on the lot line, they have to give me 10, 10 feet from the lot line to sort any structures or the setback would be 10 feet.
Didn't she have a picture in there? Didn't Bobby insert a picture?
Is it, is so, the parking lot would be between the property line and the, and the trail.
There's enough room. You're bringing up a point I hadn't...
So this is which?
Okay, yeah, okay. This part. Yep, the trail to, yeah. And then up the houses right here. That's the garage, right there.
So is there going to be a fence there too?
And there's an oak tree right there. That's interesting. Yeah, see, this is the property line right here. So then they'd have to be 10 feet on the inside of it. And what's interesting about that is they've not sent me a letter, no communication. The first time I heard about this was when he told me two days ago.
She didn't know about the parking?
Didn't know there was going to be a parking lot.
There was sales of the three lots.
No one ever told me that the properties were for sale.
Yeah.
And I'm not criticizing anybody. But if somebody's going to, you know, build a parking lot next to your property, it's kind of nice to know.
Well, that's what I assumed, that she knew.
No.
Yeah, no, that's, that's on me then because that's, you know, like we talked about initially, we wanted to sell all of them out there.
It's been talking about for six or eight months before too. I thought she would involve back and...
We talked about a long time, that whole strip, somehow or another making it a parking lot. But we were always talking about accessing it right over here instead of having to come up.
Right, I remember we were on Marina Park Commission. We talked about it.
Did I just hear that you're not, that we've been sending to the wrong that rack?
That's correct. Rack went out of business months ago.
I should, I kind of heard that, but I wasn't sure.
So yeah, I had no access to...
Do you have any emails?
Yeah, I gave it to...
She gave it to me, and I should have sent it on to you.
It's okay. But yeah, well, we can do that if you have any meeting, no worries.
So all the emails that I sent to you?
Zero, nothing. And all went to her, nothing.
What was it, Kelly dot?
Kelly dot Ashford dot K A 30 at gmail dot com.
Kelly dot Ashford dot email?
Dot K A 30 at gmail.
Gmail, that's what I had. I showed something on yesterday. And I got home yesterday.
It's all right.
I wanted to send you everything I had. I gave you a whole bunch of stuff to look at. I don't know if it was all good or not.
No, it just, from my standpoint...
Yeah, this was all lowercase.
If property was going to be available to be sold off to people, I would have liked to know if that property would have been available to be sold off to me. If the other people had opportunity to buy what was behind them, and I was never offered it. And so that, what that basically does is just, I'm out of the, I'm... If the, if the parking could have been put behind Craig or could have been put behind Monte, they got out of it by buying the property. So now the parking is, I'm the least point of resistance. So there it is, right next to my place. Parking, parking's fine. I mean, I'll use it for myself because I don't, I don't really think that people are going to park there. And if they do, it's just the same as helping, helping me out by having parking there to put my workers' cars in the parking lot instead of in my own driveway. I mean, if anybody can park there, then I can park my vehicles there too. The people across the street are parking, parking vehicles in their own parking lot, and they can park their cars. So all the worker, you know what I'm saying? People are parking all over the place there.
But it's more parking... But it's more parking for the people in the township.
Is this gonna be the first municipal parking lot that you really have, or is there other?
The lot across the street.
Oh, over by the chamber? Does that, does that have overnight parking, or is there no overnight parking?
I don't think there's ever been a forest.
We don't have restrictions.
No.
Do we have an ordinance that says no overnight parking?
The only thing we have an ordinance about, I think it's a county road commission thing about during snow, storm.
But we don't have it posted, I don't know that it's posted time-wise, like overnight during certain months of the year.
Plus, we're looking at doing a lot over across from, oh, used to be the In Between?
Yeah, the Subtik Field.
What's her name, owns, still owns the Subtik Field?
I'm still thinking the best location is right back here, to come out of our parking lot and connect in the alley behind it.
Yeah, and that's an issue between you and the library, right?
Yeah, I think they're chose to go this way.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna do their-
I know we got off on a tangent.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I wanna pull it, pull it, pull it back.
Okay, that's something you can talk about.
Wouldn't they normally inform you by a registered letter of some kind, that this is what's gonna happen? That's what we always had to do.
Thank you. My address has been the same for thirty years.
You only get a letter when it goes before the Shroydon County planning, it's only their permits from them or the road, then they send out notices to all of the neighborhoods.
Has any of it been permitted?
I don't know.
What?
No, I don't.
Has any, what been permitted?
Has it gone before the township, before the county planning, so that it can be?
No, nothing's been, so that's another opportunity you have to, where you'd be with that, so, okay, I'm sorry I brought it up, I was just curious.
That's okay, we started talking about it.
I didn't, you know.
Just-
That's okay, all right, so with the corrections that were brought up, we will submit this to the board for their approval, and we'll leave it up to them on how they wanna present it to the public, because that was one of the things they said they would do, is have a public hearing with this with the board. So they may wanna talk with us again, but at this point, our job is done. But again, I'm sure there's gonna be some follow-up on some of this stuff.
So we need a motion to adopt it, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, I'll support it.
All in favor? All right, and this is with the, with the corrections, type of capital corrections, okay?
And the CIP forms.
Yeah, and the forms, um, so, he would send that to who in the township? Because I don't know who gets this stuff.
Clerk, supervisor, clerk, or the clerk.
You and the clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanna make sure we get it to the right places at this point. So then they-
Do you want this on the, on the agenda for Tuesday?
Uh, it's up to them, I guess.
I think we care.
It's up to you.
Do you wanna put it on the agenda for?
I won't be here Tuesday, I have to go to Grand Rapids for a couple of days for some personal things, but-
Your choice, whatever you wanna do there. Just send me an F.
But these two are down on the whole thing, if they need any talk, those two will get up, no, she's not shy to talk.
It's getting to me about four o'clock or so, it's like-
Jane.
Jane, nope.
Either one of you, I mean, it's, because I won't, like I said, I won't be here Thursday, unfortunately, but, uh-
Well, if they're gonna put it on, become part of the board packet, it has to be there by Wednesday.
So I don't know if it's gonna be-
Today's the deadline to get on the board packet. Yesterday was.
No, today.
Today?
Thursday.
Thursday, I thought.
Well, they made exceptions before.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, it's five days, and I thought it was six days, and I don't know Wednesday, but we've been doing Thursday.
Well, we get it done, we give it to them, and they can decide how they wanna do it.
So you're telling me I'm gonna be up late tonight again?
All you're doing is just correcting that, sending it to me, aren't you?
Well, do I have to have the, um, when's the board packet due, today?
Yeah.
So I have to have the-
Your cover sheet?
Cover, yeah.
You wanna step in, and as soon as the meeting's over, you're gonna run up the cover sheet real quick?
Because all we're gonna have is the-
Well, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have-
Have the, uh, the ordinance. The ordinance and review of the community service, I don't know if we wanna, we don't need to put this-
You can put it off until the next meeting, because it's nothing that you're acting on right away. Yeah, I'd wait, I don't want to rush. The new supervisor take care of it.
They may want the CIP stuff, I mean, we can send that to them, but, uh-
Well, if they're gonna use that when they start their budget work, then-
Well, I don't think we need to put it on, like Mike said, on the agenda to look at, we can send it to them, they may not wanna, they're not gonna have time to look at it either, to put it on the agenda. So, but we'll give them, or you and the board, an opportu, I forget, you're still on the board, opportunity to decide how you wanna look at the CIP, whether you wanna put-
Why don't we have Dawn send it to the, Mike, at her convenience?
Yeah, right, I'm fine with that, yeah, we don't need to push her into this, she's not getting paid at seventeen bucks an hour, but-
I'd beat my head against the wall.
Sorry, so, okay, so, what else did I already send it? So send it to Mike and to Kate.
And Jane.
Okay, then, they can review it, I'm sure they don't wanna review it at the meeting, because they're not gonna have enough time, I'm sure, I don't know when Bob's coming back either, so.
Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully.
But I'll leave that up to the board to decide how they wanna do it.
I mean, everything's already printed, so it might be easier for me to just-
So when you do the-
Let Mike decide when I, after he gets it, when he puts it on.
So when you do the consent form, you just put on there the, our ordinance forty, and, you know, what were reviewed in the minutes from, um, that's, that's six, because we won't approve these minutes, so, right? So that wouldn't be on there yet, so.
Okay, so the next thing is the master plan, chapter three, you guys all have that.
You all have a copy of the master plan.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second, but no vote.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye, thank you for keeping us honest. They got a little carried away on some of that stuff, okay, so we're all clean with that now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so now our next order of business is Denise had sent myself and Mike and Dawn the community services, that she wants to add to the chapter three. That's, that's called community services, and it talks about the roads. Uh, basically, it just talks about the county commission, road commission does the maintenance, snow removal, I don't know if they wanna read through the whole thing, but-
No, I think we just need to look at what she had highlighted in yellow, which is not gonna show up on yours, I'm sorry about that.
Well, it's on, I can talk to it.
You have it?
I have it, I have it, it came in color. So under solid waste, it says, township offers residents one annual anytime cleanup voucher to be used at a drop-off center as well. Is that still viable?
Yeah.
So we need to tell her yes.
And then I saw one other thing underneath there, where it says the closest site for the recycling is located behind Napa Auto off Stripes Highway. It's no longer Napa Auto, they sold it, it's called Main Street Automotive. So she could update that, I'm sure she just took it from-
Yeah, she took it out of the last, where'd you see that?
It's in the paragraph right below where the highlighted stuff.
Main Street outside of the state.
Where it says Napa Auto, that should say Main Street.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Go back to page two when you're done there. Is Greyhound bus still in business?
It's me, could you look it up?
No, I just saw that one.
I haven't seen it around.
Well, if you saw, you're supposed to, I'm gonna tell you what I told my husband, you saw it, you think so?
I know, it goes, um- I can't do everything, Mom. Tell her.
Did you Google it and see if they-
It says the sound phone bus passes through the county with the short-
But the, there was just an announcement, Indian Trails.
One time Greyhound was out of Petoskey.
With the big mega bus or big bus, one of those.
I don't know, I mean, I-
I would just circle that and tell her to research that, pass that, let her, she could figure that out.
Yeah, she could do that, because it's, I know one time they had a stop in Petoskey, at a school there, we dropped their grandson years ago.
This, this new merger that just, within the last couple of weeks, said that they are going to have stops and get, you know, they mentioned where they were, and it's this mega bus or big, big red bu-
Something that's different.
It's one of the national, oh, it's a national, it's combining with Indian Trails to give more opportunities.
Indian Trails, where does it say Greyhound?
Uh, go to the third line, the bottom on the long-distance bus. Turn it before transferring to Grey.
Is that all accurate, have these touchdown lights, or are there still guide lights on the side? Okay, so that's all?
Yeah, I would have thought you were gonna, you started saying, it's gonna have taken a lot, ten years ago, but-
I have slower than that. And then, below the voucher, do we need to put something in there that the recycling program is financed through a, not a fee, but a tax, a, kind of property tax, for twenty-five dollars a year? County assessment, it's assessed through the county, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on our property taxes.
It's township.
Well, it's a township, but we get the bill on our-
Our property taxes, but it's a township that we voted as a township to-
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to think how you word that, township approved.
Because we, you have a vote on it.
Do we need to, I mean, do we really need to even bring that up?
I don't know.
I mean, for what?
So I was wondering when he brought it up, that-
It just says the township.
It says voluntary, almost like it's, you're volunteering to pay for it.
Well, it's volunteering to use it.
Absolutely.
That's what it means. Not everybody uses it, in fact, if you saw the statistic for Michigan, I think forty-eight percent of the people use recycling and had the opportunity to use it. They went through the whole state, all the different areas and counties, and a lot of people who even have recycling use it, so. So it is a voluntary program, it's not mandatory, like in some other places, it's mandatory, some cities, so.
So we just need, it says, is it still offered, and what is it, and so, can be picked up, um, and we could put something in there, paid by?
Mega bus, okay, it's, it's mega bus, and Indian Trails are partnering to expand bus service to northern Michigan.
Okay.
That's kinda different, new idea.
So instead of Greyhound, it's mega bus?
Mega bus has been around for a long time on the east coast.
Yeah.
And they are just on a merger with Indian Trails to provide expanded servers, service here in northern Michigan.
So it'd be Indian Trails, mega bus, or mega bus, or Indian Trails?
Indian Trails merger, has an agreement with mega bus.
M E G A.
M E G A B U S.
So Indian Trails is not the proper name we have in there?
Indian Trails is correct, Indian Trails has provided, they, they've got a partnership-
Okay.
With mega bus to provide expanded service in northern Michigan, and new stops.
So do we wanna put Indian Trails slash mega bus then, or how do we wanna put it in there?
I wouldn't put a name of anybody in there.
Just leave it as Indian Trails?
Or just leave bus service.
Let, let, let her, let, um, let Denise figure that out, but it's, it's definitely not Greyhound, but this is something new, this was just in the last month or something.
Okay, I'll, I'll just say research, and I put mega bus with a question mark too, okay?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, for the voucher, I'm gonna just have her add, because she said, is it still offered, and what is it? I'm just gonna add, paid for through your property tax assessment, voucher can be picked up at the township hall.
There you go.
Are you gonna send that to her, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I'll send it to her.
Okay, you got this Main Street thing done, okay.
Okay, what was the other one?
Partnership.
Greyhound's coming, west coast, east coast, start.
So what am I doing, with the bus service?
I just circle, uh, Greyhound bus, I got research, and I put mega bus as a question mark.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but we'll let her sort out what she wants to put in there, because if they get, if they get a, you know, agreement with them, they're not owned by mega bus, and mega bus, Indian Trails doesn't own mega bus, so we're just-
It describes it as a partnership.
Yeah, we'll just have her put that in there, we'll just question mark it.
Bus, bus service is available, period.
All right, what's the, so then we got the voucher thing taken care of, what's the next one?
Start on April third, so, it was just, if anybody wants to take the bus, it's great.
There's something on page four, we'll drop them.
So she's talking about it, under communications now. Seller of phone service available through the area, several communication towers located across the township. Reception and transmission may be limited in areas away from major roads or remote areas. Chaboygan County worked with Northern Lakes Economic Broadband Fiber Consortium two thousand nineteen to develop information, including surveys in nine different counties, townships, and villages, sponsored by D C Energies. The findings of the county revealed that eighty-two percent of residents desired improved services throughout the county. She wants to know if anything else she needs to add to that. I really don't know.
No, I, I think you could say that something has been added already, but I just leave it.
I'd just say no.
Yeah.
You got it there, Dawn, with? Okay.
I don't see anything, I, I mean, I-
Well, it talks about Prescott, electric, they do on their internet, internet, and they're done with phase one of twenty-twenty-two on the eastern portion of the township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything else to add to that, or is that, I mean, you've been involved with that.
Urban construction continues, I guess.
I don't know if we need to update that at all.
No.
I don't belong.
Yeah, I don't. Nope.
Okay, then the police department, I don't see anything different there.
DDA is the next one, she said.
So when the, when the DDA was re-upped, when was the last, I don't know that the map was changed at all, do you know, Jane?
I don't know if they changed the map, I don't think, did they change just the timeframe, or did they change the boundaries, I don't-
And Mike, Mike would know that's the question.
Well, she wants to create a new map, she's saying.
She wants to, to make it so it's easier to read it.
It's easier to read, so.
But what she's asking is if the boundaries got changed, because she doesn't wanna, she doesn't wanna fix up the map.
I, no, no, I understand, yeah, well, we can ask Mike that.
Okay.
Okay, she's asking a question about the DDA, it was developed in nineteen ninety-six, she has an old map, and she'd like to update the map, make it easier to read, plus she wants to know whether it's changed, do you have an update?
From ninety-six.
We're working on it, let me call Sharon, because we ordered one, I just never got it, and let me see if I can have a digital copy sent right now, or Denise, I'll get it and-
Yeah, Denise is looking, she wants to update it, she said this is not very good map that she's got, if you look at it, so, but if there's an updated one, and it's-
Did the boundaries change?
No.
So that's all she needs.
The problem is, is that the parcels sometimes get split.
So I would just put on there, provide a new map for Mike Ridley.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to tell what the DDA boundaries really are, you know?
Yeah. And I know she's worked with a county like with the emergency services, so she's up to speed on what our nine-one-one is capable of doing. So I know she's worked with John Wallace and, um, Mike Harris up at the county level, so, so I don't see a problem there. Okay. Any new churches? A new church, or what's happening now, or anything coming up?
City on the U L S, that was the latest one. Under recreation, how many baseball fields are there now, for sure, she says six.
Hmm, field six, actually, there's a, there's six, there should be, a T-ball, with a T-ball field, a seven, but I think it's one, two, three, four, five, six, correct. Six fields, Pat, and then a T-ball field.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, that's not considered a baseball field, that's, so that's good, there's no problem there. Um, is it talking about ice rink?
It says tennis courts, and we're converting one of the tennis courts to pickleball court, so should you add pickleball court there?
I would say yes.
Yeah, if we're gonna have that as an opportunity for people.
Yeah, tennis courts slash pickleball.
I mean, that's already been accepted.
That's under work, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not being converted, it's going to have pickleball.
It's not being converted. It's going to have pickleball lanes.
Okay, but so we'll have pickleball.
Yeah, it's still gonna be the same.
So you could just put pickleball slash tennis courts?
Yeah.
If they're gonna be used for the same.
Right, the same, they're describing differently, right? Yeah. And then it says, see the township recreation plan for more detail on.
At the Burt Lake State Park, do they have more than three hundred and eighty campsites there?
I think it's, I thought it was three hundred, right around three hundred, but they took away the upper level. They set campsites up there, and they took those away. I don't know how many were there. I don't think there was eighty.
It says there's three hundred, in this information, it says there's three hundred and eighty.
I don't know if there's that much. I thought it was closer to three hundred. I will find that out.
Well, we'll circle that and just put a question mark.
I am not. Good raises another question.
I need her to check that out. That's what we're paying her for.
Right. Well, I wondered now that the sewers hooked up and they're.
Huh? Expanded again.
Expanded, that's what I wondered.
Um, and what about Camp Algonquin? I heard that that was changed ownership or changed or something?
That's a Y M C A still owns it, though.
As far as I know, Y M C A still owns it.
So.
They had some issues a few years ago, but it stayed with the Inverber Y M C A.
I have a question going back to the parks where it says warming hut and pavilion. Is the pavilion considered the covered ice rink?
The one down here?
No.
Call person part.
I'm thinking the pavilion is a separate, that, that separate area that you, has picnic tables and things down there. You can use that for, um, they rent that out for different activities down there.
And it's lower, it says ice roller skating, we could say, should say covered, maybe.
That's the ice rink, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It could say covered ice slash roller skating, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of important.
And pavilion is a separate item?
Yep, yep.
She gets that done.
Okay.
And where it says additionally, is the new hiking trail that was just put in, in Tuscarora Township, or is that in?
Where was that?
That was just donated to the Traverse City.
That L T C.
I think that's, that's a topic, that's outside of the township.
Well, they don't, they're not identifying where they're at, they're just saying in general, there's a hiking trail. Out, you know, if people want, they'd have to go to L T C's website.
Oh, yeah.
So does this reference then the, the parks recreation plan for more detail?
It's not that.
Says right in there.
Yeah.
Says right there in the first paragraph.
See township recreation plan for more detail.
We want more detail on all that stuff.
So we don't have to do that.
No, no. So I don't, I don't want to get into, there's just six hundred and twenty-one students at the school versus.
Something hundred and something, but.
I'm not gonna worry about it.
No, cause that's gonna fluctuate anyway. She says within the twenty-two, twenty-three, so she got her counts from someplace.
Yeah.
Yeah, she must have called the school.
Okay, so the groups. Indian River, Indian, okay, Indian River Christmas, she says, is it a group or an event or both?
It's.
I think it's both.
It's not.
Well, it's a five oh one C three, so it's a preparation.
Mike, is the Indian River Christmas, is that a five oh one?
I do not know the answer.
I think it is.
Because people go and money to it.
Because didn't that almost disband and?
That was years ago. We don't want to get into that. That was in.
Last year.
Copeland is a.
Yeah.
Longer than that, cause that's when I got involved, when I started a new group.
No, the, the old.
Yeah.
Township.
That was a long time ago. That's been at least ten years.
Two years ago.
But there's been a more recent disbanding.
Oh, there has? Okay. I, I haven't been involved. I used to do the parade years ago, but.
Because Matt Weiner did the last one. He had to pick it up with the last one.
Was it a five oh one, is that what?
I thought it was a five oh ones. The old, the other one was. Uh, when it was taken over by, uh, who was the group? People took over Indian River Christmas from.
Don Bodnar and those guys or?
Yeah, she was the last real woman.
So do we want to call it a group or?
I have to, cause I know she was involved with it.
Oh, you, you just texted her?
Yeah.
I texted Don.
Were you texting her?
I texted Don.
We'll do her too. We'll get an answer from one of them.
We'll get some, Sue Fisher?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I thought back in the day, cause when Gary Friesmuth got involved, I got involved with them, we set up all the parade to new group, and I always thought it was a five oh one C three, cause they, they got the guy that used to be the chief engineer Chrysler to run it. And they brought a whole new group of people, but maybe not.
Roy Shover.
Roy Shover, yeah, he was involved, cause Bill Martin and Carolyn Martin, and they started a new group, but maybe not, cause they took donations, so. I would assume they, they formed a five oh one C three, but.
Didn't have to be, no problem.
Yeah, but people cut deductive, if they did.
They're, they are missing one.
Okay.
They're missing one group, and that is Friends of the Library. They're a five oh one too, aren't they? They have Friends of Inland Lake Schools, both are.
On Alaska.
Kelsey.
You're the go-to guy today.
I'm not really get-through, I'm not the get-through guy.
Basically, any, any additional organizations you would like to highlight, I think if you put the names in there, then that gives people the opportunity to look them up and see if they're interested in, in joining for like volunteer opportunities.
Oh, the Bulldog Group, that's a boosters club.
Boosters.
Athletic boosters.
So that's, that's a yes to the Bulldog Group.
If they're still around, should be.
Well.
They're not a, they're not a viable.
Okay.
They're not.
So then what she could do instead of putting them, she could put them in the community services, like in the next, where the, where the Bulldog Group is, she could just move them into the next area around them.
Community services, okay. Should we add the Alzheimer's group? They, do they still meet here monthly?
They do.
Yeah, remember the last time they brought a potluck and they were giving us the evil eye?
Oh, yeah.
So I was.
Alzheimer's support.
I didn't know who they were, I mean, they were.
I don't know if I put that down.
You can lie when you offer food.
No, they were bringing a potluck organization.
Organization, they're just a support group for each other, probably.
Mike's like, well, you're not just.
They started talking and calling back and forth.
They don't know they were getting better in the show, where they came in here.
So where are we with little Friends of the Library?
We're gonna put them on the community services. I mean, they have a, they have a pretty robust group. They come in here, they play mahjong and.
Yeah, my wife plays mahjong too. Okay. So any other additional organizations we would like to highlight? No? I think we got them covered.
Is, um, would the Globe be considered a organization?
It's a youth, it's an after.
Yeah, after-school sponsored by a church.
After-school, yeah, after-school.
So wouldn't that be a, would that be a private civic or it would be a civic, wouldn't it?
It's private.
It's private.
It comes on there, they asked us, is the Methodist Church.
Well, they're their own five oh one C three now.
Are they separate from the Methodist?
Yeah.
So we should add them?
Yes, yes, we should add them.
And so then what is it? It's a after-school.
A youth after-school.
Youth support.
Youth support.
Yeah, when we set it up, the intention is to leave it as part of the Methodist Church.
Yeah, and the thing where they couldn't get the grants directly, so they had to get their own five oh one C three.
Okay.
For a fire chief to care about that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any other organizations that I know of.
Okay, so. Let's go to water sewage services. Have we seen anything there?
I have a question. Two thousand fourteen phase one? Now we're talking about a new phase.
Yeah, right. I brought that up once or twice.
So the language needs to be changed?
Call this the initial phase.
Instead of phase one, I would put down commercial district.
Okay.
Yeah, cause according to, to get the grant, they had to change it. Is that what it was with the grant money or something? I don't know. I don't want to get into it.
So we should just call it commercial phase or?
Commercial district.
Commercial district.
Original sewer district.
Yeah, because there was a sewer district made, so.
So that nobody gets wigged out about it. How about we just call it the commercial phase one?
Commercial phase one, and then yellow is residential phase one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do that as long as it's.
And those have not happened yet.
Nope.
So we're not gonna put anything in here about that, right? Like, or should we? It was recently sought, or grant funding, okay.
I think that's going in our future.
Yeah, it's right here. She's, she's got a whole paragraph. Recently sought, Lieutenant Billy has been awarded a loan grant funding for, yeah.
Yeah, it is in there.
Okay, the last.
There's two phases.
The last.
Two phases. Should we add phase three? Has that been, or no?
Phase one.
It did numerous phases.
Can we have her, right there, South Straits Highway, did you notice that?
Straight is spelled wrong.
Yeah.
Okay, we're all.
A lot of people do that, don't they? You're seeing a lot of people do that.
Where is it?
First paragraph, second about line, South Straits is misspelled.
Oh, yeah.
The last sentence in that paragraph where it says, after Mac Avenue, it says phase one I.
Yeah.
What?
Where do you see that? What are you talking about?
That's two, that should be two.
The last line.
That should see a phase.
One I, oh, yeah.
Two.
Phase two, right?
Yeah.
So that's phase two, right?
And do we have, do we have, and should we say we're working on a phase three or?
Additional phases are under look.
It was approved by the board, and they've gone out for congressional earmarks, so six million dollars for it, so.
So, yeah, we should say something. How do we want a word at that?
Additional funding is being sought. I wouldn't put earmark in there. That's bad notation for a lot of people.
I'm just gonna say work on phase three has, should I say funding work?
Phase three and the expansion of the original plan.
Are being discussed or reviewed or?
Worked on.
Worked on, I guess. Okay.
Have to use a word like disintermediation or something where people get their attention.
Yeah, the last paragraph is basically boilerplate stuff about the wells. Subtake and blah, blah, blah. That's probably taken out of our last. Okay? So Dawn, you're gonna just send her the corrections, the emulator.
Yep. Probably gonna just say Straits is spelled S T R A I T S, so she can do it, the Word document, she can do five.
Yeah.
Go through and find them.
Yeah.
You know, before we leave our master plan, this is something I want to make sure that we get involved or put in the master plan, whether we do anything or not, is short-term rentals. It's becoming a big item here. I'm going on those Burt Lake buddies, and I'm going on your website, and everybody's looking for cottages, they're all, it's getting bigger here. And I know your friend has been sending me emails too, but we can't overlook short-term rentals somehow. I got this off, we get that M T A questions, and the gal from, uh, or the person from Elegant County, they did a pretty, I mean, that's a big deal, but it's a township there. And they've got all kinds of different items. If you want to go back and look at that stuff about short-term rentals, they also put in the ordinances that you have to follow. They register everybody there. And she said it's working really well.
It's Costco Township.
Yeah, Costco Township, Elegant County. It was on that M T A when people ask questions. I look at that every day just to see, but this was a good one. Whether, it's something we would do, cause again, they're probably a lot bigger than we are, and they probably have somebody to go through that.
Code enforcement is all those.
But I think it's got hotline questions, registration forms, good neighbor policy, which the O P A started to look into. You know, be kind to your neighbors and have people rent, stuff like that. And they have a list, so you can tell who's on the list. I think there's something we can't bury, uh, in the.
They're actually much smaller than we are. They're twen, well, about the same size, twenty-eight hundred and twenty-three resident.
Yeah, but if you look at that, it's very well done. I don't know if they hired somebody. It's an ordinance. So they must have, they have an attorney that put this together. And, and I know talking to Matt, our attorney, he's done that for Boines, they brought this up before, Boines, Eddie and Potaski now. So, and Denise Klein, so before we get done with our master plan, I don't know if people are gonna object to it, I'm sure we'll get a lot of flack. But again, I think we need to at least refer to it in our master plan that we have to look into, because it's, this year you're gonna see a lot more issues than last year, cause more and more people are.
Is there, is there a consensus to which way this is going? Either county control or township control?
County says no way.
But that's only our county, but a lot of other counties too.
No, it's all townships and cities.
I think it's pretty much been townships.
Cause they're unique to different townships.
I understand that.
And I know our county, you know, Mike Terrence washed his hand like Punch's pilot, you know, so it's up to the townships.
He did say, the one time that I talked to him, he did say that, um, that they would incorporate into if the townships, if the individual townships wanted, they'd come up with an ordinance, they would come up with like a blanket thing, so that anybody who checked with the county, just kinda like our village overlay.
Yeah.
For Indian, or for Tuscarora Township.
But I think just like with the tow truck ordinance, we have to be the driver for this county.
Yeah, which reminds me, people are starting in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, do we need to vote on chapter three, or this is just, we're done with chapter three and we're onto the front?
Well, it's just, it's a review, and I'm sure we'll vote on it.
Eventually.
Eventually, yeah, I do remember. Yeah, cause right now we're not.
Okay, I didn't know.
We got changes and she asked questions. She's gonna incorporate that one. When she comes for our third time, I'm sure this will be, we'll vote on that plus the other.
I just hope they're sure we're.
No, no. I just want, cause we are off of this now. We're just a review of it.
One, one thing back to housing, don't we have like twelve or thirteen townships in the county? So it's, so would you have that many different?
No, we have more than that.
Whatever is, you could have a new policy.
No, no.
But I'm just saying, if you looked at the survey, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it, the biggest question, one of the biggest questions was short-term rentals. Wasn't the fact that they didn't want short-term rentals, and they need to be controlled somehow. Fifty-eight percent or sixty percent of the people that took the survey, so we have to address that question. Do we do anything or not? You know, it's up to, an ordinance would be written, but it has to be done by the township board, so I don't know where they would stand. I know in the past, it's been kinda iffy with some of them, but, uh, you know, we just need to make sure that we do put something in the master plan to satisfy fifty-eight percent of the people that took the survey. So it's, it's just a statement I'm making for down the road when we start looking at future items to put in here, so. Okay. So we're done with that. Dawn's gonna send the corrections back to Denise. Denise will make the corrections. I think the next time she'll come back with this, plus the next, I can't remember what's the next thing she was gonna do for us now, but when she comes to the meeting. I got it written down here somewhere.
Is the next one a big one or something?
But I had, I sent you the email that she sent us, telling us what the steps were. So, but again, you know, we'll just, that'll be the third time that she's here, so that'll be the big one. Cause we only paid for four, and the fourth one will be to finalize it and to review it with, uh, whoever comes, and then have a public hearing with the township and the board after the fourth one, so. So the third one would be the more meat and potato stuff that goes along with our old planning, master plan, so. But it's, okay? And if you want to look at the master plan, it's out there on the website.
Right. I do want to copy this. I can copy that.
I'll take, I can do another one.
Can you?
Yeah, that's fine. I just go back on it, so.
Okay.
Make a couple copies.
Let me make a couple copies.
Okay, yeah.
And I didn't get all the detail, but it shows you what you can click on and stuff. It's just a guide. It's more than what we would probably do here. What it says, pardon?
Did you send it to my friend?
No, I hadn't sent it to anybody, so. Again, I assume she's coming back pretty soon. But I know we're gonna see a lot more, uh, issues, or people, both way, both ways. And I guess the whole thing, I don't want to get on my soapbox, but again, you're not gonna stop short-term rentals. Burt Lake Preservation looked into doing stuff. It's too political. So basically, what we said, we do a, uh, good neighbor policy. We put in a newsletter. What you need to do, talk to the owner first, and if you have problems, go call the police or whatever, and some of our stuff. And now, unfortunately, Chris Kenswater's having some health issues, but he's putting together a subject program that would overlap in some of these short-term rentals. So he's working with the health department. Cause they're lax in doing their job and checking these, but again, they'll tell you, we only have one or two people for the whole county. So it's a lot of things gonna happen here.
I think when, um, we did the, um, the survey, the results that came back from the survey with, the majority of the people said, we want, we want regulations. We don't wanna stop them. We just want them regulated, so, which means an ordinance, and I think we're gonna.
Well, this, we're gonna recommend that, whether it happens or not, uh, we can go ahead and, you know, once we get through this, our next step would write an ordinance. We'll leave that up to the township board to decide whether they wanna adopt it or not. If they don't, then fifty-eight percent of the people took the.
I feel like it's the responsible thing to do, and this is the, this group right here is where it has to be initiated from.
Yeah, if you look at the other townships, and most of them are full-time or get paid, they have somebody to do that. They've done their ordinance, it was like Boines City, Petoskey, and Matt, who was our attorney, he wrote those ordinances for them.
So he's already, there's, so he's already got a template.
Yeah.
It's, it's out there that they can, they can garner that information and then the more townships that we look at, then that, that gives us an opportunity. Okay, we like, we like this, we wanna improve this, this is where the direction that we would like Tuscaray Township to go in.
So again, I think we need to put it in the master plan, and we're gonna look into it, the planning commission, and then once this is approved, that'll be our next.
After we finish.
We're still here, that'll be our next deal, once we get through the master plan. I mean, that ordinance that we put together, I say Dawn basically put it together, it's held up pretty good with the county, the food truck ordinance. And I'm not sure if these guys are paid yet this year or not.
Not yet, but Jacob told me he's gonna stop in. He, he overpaid by a hundred dollars last year.
Yeah, he did.
So I'm assuming we're.
He paid four hundred and it should've been.
Yeah, so I assume it's, you know, they're coming back and then there's somebody else who said wants to put one down by their cooperation.
Roger Wilson wants to put one down.
But I think that's a, a good milestone or something that we can be proud of with the county and put together. It's just hopefully with the new township board, they'll follow through with it. You know, I think that clerk always did it before, so hopefully the clerk or the supervisor would follow through with it enough.
Keeping up with, you know, the number, I mean, I think last year you kept after us and we ended up, it took us a couple of times with.
Right.
Gordon, Sonny Gordon down there to.
Oh, they, they were pretty good, I mean, they were both real good.
Well, I think now with Matt Whiten or having them on, so I, for me, just to go back, we did a great job with, uh, food truck ordinance to county. I went up there and when they approved it and they were really happy to see what we did and they were gonna adopt it. Now, whether they did or not yet, I don't know, but, uh, even, uh, Matt Kavanaugh gave me a kudos for what we did. And he's usually anti-us, but he did a, he did a good job. So we're gonna look at, hopefully, short-term rentals after, uh, we get through with the master plan. So hopefully it satisfies, people look at the, uh, video, they'll see that it's, it's not being buried. That's gonna happen. I mean, at least look at it, I would say.
Yeah.
From the, from the planning commission, uh, standpoint. Okay?
Okay, so we're done with that, but the next one is, uh, keep the, uh, this ordinance, this, um, ordinance forty.
Okay, just to give you a little background, we, uh, back in, what, December?
January.
We submitted this to, Jane was there, I was, Jane was the one that took the blunt of everything, but, uh, uh, and we kinda rejected the ordinance forty that we had. And basically, two of the things that they did not assume liked was the fact that we said Planning and Zoning Enabling Act. And for some reason, the board thought we were trying to take over the county, or township with zoning. And I think I made it clear a couple of months later, the next month at the meeting, that we do not wanna do zoning. So we took out the word zoning enabling that.
Pretty much everywhere that, that said zoning.
Anyplace that said zoning, we took it out. And then we also put in, uh, uh, the fact that we would do the CIP. Did we say May?
Um, yeah, it actually, yeah.
May, may.
Yep, it says, uh.
May be exempted.
Yep, that it may be, so basically, it says exactly what the law.
Yeah, so ba- everything else kinda goes along with our bylaws, except for those two things. And hopefully that satisfied Mr. Kramer or the rest of the board. He also has a resolution that apparently was written, I have not seen, that would cover the same things. So he thinks that we're able to use legally.
But that's not what the state law says.
Well, it's not, and Denise Klein checked with, uh, NMCAG legal with their attorney and.
And they would decide one way or the other.
They said we needed the ordinance, so it's, he needs to go back.
So we went back and forth, okay, between a resolution and an ordinance, and he agreed that we would re, we would rewrite it, send it back to the board. And Bob would send this ordinance forty and his resolution to Matt, uh, what's Matt's name?
Cross.
Cross.
Yeah, Cross, attorney. And according to email I got from Bob yesterday, Matt was kinda favoring the resolution over the ordinance, but he said he'd look at both of them. So right now, we're doing what we've been asked to do by the state, we're following the law by writing this ordinance, and it's up to the township board to decide whether a resolution or an ordinance is sufficient to keep us, uh, working, I guess. So hopefully, we'll leave that up to our attorney to decide. So we don't get back and forth again.
Yep.
It caused a lot of issues between us and the, and the township, some of the township board members, so. Bob and I came to an agreement that the attorney would make that decision on which way we'd go. I said we would go with whatever attorney says, so.
So Kelly, you, are you aware of how, what happened with this, why we're even talking about this? The, the law, dang it, stop calling me, I don't know who you are, for the love of God.
It's me, I'm calling.
It's probably a spammer, it's, it was some insurance.
So we were formed under a different law, and that law was repealed and it was replaced by this P, this MEA, the.
Two thousand and eight.
In two thousand and eight. Uh, according to the law, we were supposed to have repealed any re, and we were formed by resolution under the previous law. According to this law, you were supposed to repeal the resolution and replace it with an ordinance. We missed that step. And we referenced this MEA in, uh, all of our documents in the, in the last, um, update, or master plan update, and the last master plan, because it was done after that, but we actually didn't do.
We never, we never.
So when we adopted in, in twenty twelve, we were supposed to have prior to that.
Apparently, yeah.
We should've had.
We should've had that.
This, and we did.
We didn't do that, we were still going off the resolution that we had nineteen ninety-six or something.
That, that stuff was not taken.
Yeah, so.
So that's what we're, we're just making sure that we're in compliance. I, I don't care whichever way they say to do it. I, I don't actually care, just give me something in writing from a lawyer that says it's okay to do a resolution.
To do it this way.
Yep.
Well, this may be their resolution.
Either way, if they wanna do, if the lawyer says it's okay to do.
An ordinance.
We just wanna make sure we're legal.
Make sure that we do it the way that the lawyer says to do it.
Yep, so it goes in our book, yeah.
You know, the people are putting together a master plan, we need something. Whether, they, they recommend, they recommend the ordinance.
You need the ordinance for it.
But for some reason, that's, well, raises a red flag with our, some of our board members saying, you guys wanna take over the township zoning, you wanna control it? And I've seen emails going to your friend that, what a way in and, uh, other emails.
You've got a lot of power here.
Yeah, and that's what, and I've hopefully convinced them, cause I've stood up at two board meetings and said, we don't want zoning, we have a good re, and Mike Tourist was here. And one of them needs to confirm that. So for some reason, it's a dirty word when you mention that we wanna do zoning.
And the only way you can do zoning anyways is that it, you have to get a petition signed by freeholders, a hundred and fifty or however many freeholders, and it has to go on the ballot. So nobody's done that, and if somebody did that, there would be no choice.
And the board of trustees has to approve zoning too.
Yeah.
And we have no control, but for some reason, and Mike will tell you, we went through hell in January over this thing, thinking that we were trying to, uh, want more power.
And emails got out there saying that we, we were just, we wanted to take over the township zoning.
And I couldn't convince them. I got into a big argument, it's one of their.
It was a template that the MTA had, um, that we used for the ordinance, and then we called the MTA, they gave us a template, included that stuff.
The wording is the same.
Yeah, everything was.
The wording is the same whether you are a township that's a charter, you're not a charter.
The only thing we took out of their items, which apparently was their red flag, was the word zoning. Even though if you go and look at the act, it says you have to be approved by the township board and go through the iteration of going on a ballot.
So.
And they still, so hopefully, we'll get it settled, whether it's a ordinance or.
If you wanna catch up, you can watch the January ordinance, I think that's.
Yeah, there you go.
Or you can look at the, uh.
So we need a motion to, um, yeah, adopt this and revise, adopt.
I'll make a motion.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So do we wanna do the MEDC, you wanna do the budget stuff?
Um, which one do you wanna do first?
Mike, you know.
You got the RRC baseline report, did you get that?
Yep.
This is what Dawn and I talked, when I leave office, I wanna, you know, we've come a long way in the RRC.
Right.
And I don't wanna see it, make sure that we have some people that will pick up the baton, keep running with it, and I, Dawn was willing to continue doing this.
What else you gotta do?
Yeah.
Maybe set your green case.
We, a lot of these can be in, in, right into our master plan.
Very close.
We have, we have master plan, we've got the downtown plan, we have a capital improvements plan. Uh, that would be under section one. Two, we have master plan, three is, wonder why they don't have that down there.
So essentially, this art, with this RRC, if we, if we get to best, if we get to the essentials, um, it, if we get, uh, approved for essentials, it means we have best practices in place. And what it gets us is some additional, we will have access to, um, technical assistance, uh, help with grants.
The match on main, which is big, because right now, the, um, uh, the grants that they, they'll, they started a hundred thousand. And people don't have that, they're not going in with it, uh, with that kinda plan. Some of them are, but, uh, we've had some, the, some of the business come in and they don't need that much money. And they don't wanna go through, the, the match on main is a twenty-five thousand dollar.
Right.
Match, and it's, uh.
They're certified, right? You get certified as.
That's what this is.
Well, that's a certi-, I took the class.
Okay.
I took the class, tough boys. But, um, if we follow through, if you look at page, uh, it's best practice one. You'll see that, uh, it'd be on page two there. I'm sorry, not page two, it's on page seven. I hope everybody has that one, same one, page seven.
Yep.
Thought you have. Uh, update the master plan to meet the RRC, uh, expectations, develop, six-year CIV, we've just done that. Develop a comprehensive public engagement plan, which we've done that with, uh, the surveys, correct?
Right.
Yep. And some of this is, um, so, uh, the one that I like is the, is page five, cause it shows you really where we're at. So page five is your.
Five is this one right here.
Yeah, this one right here.
Yeah.
It shows you really where you're at, um.
I remember looking at this.
What they said was, we're twenty-five percent complete.
Yep.
And that's the green, and then we're seventy-five percent, the yellow is what we're working at, and some of it.
We have, we're close to it, we.
Yeah.
Could be in the process.
I mean, some of it, so like on page seven, that he was looking at like, um, one point one, um, that we've adopted a, a master plan in the first, in the past five years. So once we finish this master plan, we'll be green there, but, so that will happen. Um, one point three is the governing body has adopted a capital improvements plan. Okay, we just finished it, so we'll be green there. Um, and then one point four is, um, we have a public participation plan for engaging a diverse set of community stakeholders. I think we did that, I think we met that with our survey.
Right.
So I would wanna call Pablo and say, here's the survey we sent out, here's the results, does that make us green? Cause he should update it, right?
Well, it's called a Trello board, he's gonna help you. We go right to that Trello board and I download the, upload the documents.
Oh, okay.
You know, and then I check it off.
Okay, so we need to, we just need to do, there's just some steps.
Would the, now you interrupt, would the Township of Excellence find that they're going to apply to any of this, or is this?
I don't think so, I haven't found, I haven't found a correlation, there, there may be.
There may be some, but it doesn't.
So they need to somewhere across, or use it.
If it has things to do with policies.
But if they.
I know you were running parallel one time.
But if the Township of Excellence, even if, if we achieve it here, this actually gets us stopped, the Township of Excellence, we just get a.
My issue is, could they use any of the Township of Excellence to fill in some of these blanks?
Maybe.
Yeah, go back and look at it, see.
I don't know what's.
Very curious, and I think Jane put this out on the Talkback, about the percentage of townships.
It shows how many communities are certified.
How many communities are in this, uh, M E C, whatever.
MTA.
MTA thing.
Township of Excellence, there are none right now, so.
Yeah, not how many percent, then you look at the Township of Excellence, right now, there's zero.
Wow.
What's up, like, this is the one to go for if there's money involved.
There's money involved. But Denise Klein came to us originally, you were here the first time she came, and she talked, if we could get certified with this, we could, uh, be, uh, qualified to get grant money to pay for part of our master plan. Also, the street, what was, uh, uh, something to do with a.
Michigan Main Street.
Michigan Main Street, we would get funding to help do that. Plus, there'll be a lot of other things, like writing ordinances for short-term rentals and things like that. If we were certified under this, uh, MECD, then we would qualify for, for funding. And at the time, they were running parallel with the, uh, MECD and the Township of Excellence, and Township of Excellence is nice, but it doesn't get you any money. So this is what, if, if it's not something that we, uh, you know, doesn't take a whole lot of time to do.
Well, even if it does, it's worth doing, I mean, we're green.
It is.
Section, so best practice two under zoning, we're green on two point two, two point three, and two point five, we need to, we're yellow on two point one and two point four. And I don't know, so the government, the governing body adopted a zoning ordinance that aligns with the goals of the current master plan. We fall under the county, so I don't know how, that's something we'd have.
That was one of the problems that we had, we didn't have our own zoning.
Yeah.
That's why we're not gonna be what they call certified, we'll have the essentials. There are two levels, the certified, maybe certified is, is a lot more difficult.
Okay.
You do have to have your own zone.
So without the zoning, we're in essentials.
This is called the essentials.
Yeah, so for sure, do, do you have to have, I mean, is there, cause I, I, so I, once the master plan is updated, review the zoning code for, uh, needed updates.
Just review it.
So we just review the counties, right? Wouldn't we just review the counties? Cause we fall under the county, it's not like we don't have zoning, we do. It's the county, it's under the county.
Right.
But, but you said it was, we're at a lower level if we don't have our own zoning.
Yeah.
Does that cut off the money then?
No.
Okay.
All money is available, but there's just, there's other things that are.
And basically, the county's master plan mirrors ours, basically, they take ours and use it. So I mean, as far as, they come up with a different zoning areas, you know, um, you know, for commercial, residential. They pretty much take away, we'd given them in two thousand and twelve, and they incorporated into their budget, cause there's not a whole, in their plan, cause there's not a whole lot of townships that do a, a good job with their master plan like we've done. You remember back when we did that.
They think that they adopt it and then they're supposed to follow what.
Yeah, well, we went through.
Our recommendations.
But right now, it's, we have a pretty good working relationship with the, with the county, you know, with.
Mike.
Mike Tourist and Mike Kavanaugh, and, uh, we had a review on the in-between a few weeks ago, and they all came down from county, and Mike and I walked through with them, and that helped him get his site plan put through. Because we were all in, in tune with it, we reviewed it here, we had our met pen, so that's the kinda things we wanna see, that they would, uh, go along with us. Again, in the past, as you know, we never got, uh, a lot of cooperation out of county. We recommend something and they would.
Go on a completely different.
Yeah, so, so far, it's worked good, so why would we want our own zoning anyway? So that's, so I think we convinced the board, rest of the board that, especially when Mike Tourist was here, decided we have a good working relationship with them as well. Okay. Alright, so you're gonna pass the torch to Dawn, there would be.
Well, I still, I'm still, it's a standard of referee, just, just as a outsider.
Cause he's got the connection.
Yeah, so even if, uh, you leave as a township server, which, you fled a day yet for sure, or? No? Okay. I'm not gonna, okay. So he, he would work with you anyways with this thing.
So we said the planning commission, because a lot of this is planning commission stuff, it falls in, under us. We should take this on finishing it, I said, as long as he's.
Do we need to amend our bylaws to say that we're gonna do this to, or is that?
I don't think so.
Fit in with the other things we have?
Yeah. I, I don't, because I don't know that, I mean, once we get through it.
You don't have, there's nothing else.
I don't know that you have to keep going, I mean, you could go.
You could go to the next level.
You could go to the next level, but we would have to get zoning.
You could say this is part of doing the master plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can incorporate it with the table, I'm sure Denise will put it in there, cause she had asked us a lot back, way back when.
So, I don't know that, do we need to make a motion or anything that we're gonna take, take this on or?
Well, we can, we can make a motion, just to make sure it's official, I make a motion that we continue with doing the.
RRC.
ME-DC, RRC.
Yeah, the ME-DC Communities Program.
Make sure that it says, essentials.
Yep.
Essentials level.
Yeah.
Essentials level, yeah.
Essentials.
That Mike.
A word in here.
Yeah, it's in, right here under.
So I'm gonna say that the motion's gonna be that the planning commission will continue.
Working towards a certification of the essentials level.
Yep.
At the essential level.
At the essential level. Is there a second?
To obtain the essentials level certification.
Work toward obtaining.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Who, who, was it me that made the motion?
You made the, I made the motion.
I made the motion, John's second.
It's been updated.
Okay, Mike and Jane.
And Jane.
John came first.
Either way.
We don't want Jane, she's got too many.
Jane, Jane.
This is the worst, this is how contentious we get.
I know.
Arguing over who won.
Yeah, it's tough, isn't it?
Okay. Okay, and so, that gets us into the last thing, which is the budget.
Okay, you all got a copy of the revised budget that I shared.
Where, where we said essentials level, it should say essentials designation. I was looking for the word, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's why we got you on here.
Well, I, I see it right there, it says essentials designation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
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 So, on the budget.
So, on the budget narrative, we had, much was put in originally?
I'm going there right now.
Twenty-six, seven.
Let's see, government. What is it under financials?
I know it was. We had twenty-four thousand here. Twenty-two, twenty-three, planning.
I don't remember, are we, we're one-on-one, so I just got out of the one-on-ones. Seven, five, oh.
I think last year when we were doing the budget, that was when we got the bids.
Yeah.
And then we decided to.
Right, and she gave us.
This one, we left enough in there, in case we had decided to take on the other.
Exactly, good point, whether we took on the ordinance for.
Yep, so that is.
To take the other bid from the other contractor.
Well, the twenty, yeah, he gave us.
We wanted to make sure we had enough, I think it was twenty-three.
Yeah, but again, I think the reason why we went from sixteen-eight, I think was her bid, to the twenty, stayed at twenty-four, because if needed, she would write an ordinance for the safe streets or whatever was it? I can't remember.
So.
There was something else that she would, and that was gonna cost about six or eight thousand.
The lady from ME-DC was gonna.
Well, lady from NIMCA, yeah. And, but we didn't even put in any grant money, because we weren't sure which right now, we get certified, but.
So what happened was last, during the year, they took, so we originally started out with what we were approved was twenty-six, seven, fifty. So this, this, all of this, the fifteen hundred, the twenty-four thousand, we had put in there for professional, that was the master plan. That was also, Mike had asked for some extra to be, Mike Ridley.
Right.
Extra to be put in there because of the RRC, cause the things that dovetailed in.
Right.
To the master plan.
And then there were some other issues.
And it was another, I think, seven thousand, right, is what you would ask for.
For, uh.
For the master plan, for the RRC, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, I had to get that back, I'll call Denise and get a figure, an exact figure, are you, are you working on the budget?
Yeah, we're looking at the budget. So what happened was, they took ten thousand away from us. And moved it somewhere else.
Just like that.
Yep, and, and we only spent sixty on education and training. And that was for just a course in Michigan.
Who made this up for you?
I think Bob or Jane was somebody.
Bob gave me the form.
Yeah.
And he, he gave me the example, he didn't give us the numbers.
Okay.
He had the sixteen thousand and, and, but he didn't, he said this was just a, you know, a format. It wasn't anything that we could use to give to the board, you know, for the budget. So that's what Dawn's done, she's taken that form and, you know, put it on the sheet that the board wants to see.
This is actually, actually what they want to see, I'm gonna revise this.
Yeah, okay.
Because we, we need more than sixteen thousand for starters, but the contract allowance for, unless she starts billing this year.
No, she said she wouldn't, I thought it was sixteen-eight or something.
So what you're saying is she's not gonna start billing us until after June?
Right.
Yeah.
I called her, emailed her, cause we were asking whether it's gonna be some, she said, no, they have a new accounting firm. It probably wouldn't be till after June that we would start billing. So that's why we moved the money out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have to go pick up Andrew for this thing, is that deal?
You're fine, Mike, we're done.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
No, thank you, I'll need to talk to you, I feel like I owe you a big apology.
We can, we can, that's a whole different subject.
Okay.
So the original contract that we signed.
I want to ask Mike one more thing now before he leaves. So what, have you had any idea when you're leaving, cause we want to give you a goodbye speech?
No, I've, I've, I've got an idea, but I'm keeping it under my hat for time.
So this isn't a good time to say?
Well, no, I'll be back, whatever you, you know, I'll be, I'm coming around as a.
Yeah, I know, I know, we will, but hopefully still.
You can sit.
But we're hoping you still.
I want to participate, if it's a, if it's an outsider, I'll, I'll definitely, you know.
Yeah, but we still want you to be involved with us, so, you know, we'll have a meeting before you leave, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Before you pick, pick a date, we'll have at least one more meeting, so we give a proper goodbye.
I appreciate it, no, I'm, I don't think I can stand choking up again, so.
No, you're not going anywhere, so.
No, I'm not.
We just want to give you kudos, but go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm gonna get, I'll go to Andrew.
Thank you, Mike, for all your input, buddy.
Thanks, see you guys in a little while.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the original quote that she gave us for the master plan was sixteen-nine, and it included sixteen-six ninety. And it included master plan and mapping, meetings, four meetings, expenses for mileage, printing, et cetera, and administration. So, we have, we have that, so we know we need.
Yep, I knew it was more than sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so we know we for sure need sixteen-six ninety, just for the master plan. And then Mike had, had, I know he had another seven thousand, because there are things that, for this ME-DC, RRC, that need to be in the master plan, they, like they dovetail. And so he had asked for that, so that's how we came up with the twenty-four. I think we need to even bump it up, because if we're gonna do this.
A lot more activity doing, getting what you're doing with the.
If we're gonna do this.
Yeah, the plan that you're gonna put together.
Well, plus if we start working on something else.
CIP, if we're gonna start, if they, I want money for CIP.
No, no, I agree, I mean.
So I, I, I personally think that we probably should be some, like maybe, and professional expenses, maybe more like twenty-eight thousand.
Okay. So we'll need to break that down?
Yep, I'm gonna ask Denise, because I know she's probably been involved in CIPs, I'm gonna almost guarantee it. You know, what, for size.
What's an estimated cost to have that done?
But I'm gonna guess it's probably gonna be, I, someplace I read, I read seven thousand, so when I was looking, but I.
When I, I was looking at them, they said, you know, ten thousand is, is a good minimum.
Well, depends on how they want it.
Yeah.
I mean, if they want it like we did it now, or they want it like the other townships have done, if they want a book like the, they hired Denise to do the parks commission stuff, I mean, she had a beautiful book that she had.
I think.
Yeah, so like I said, it depends on how much they want.
Or if you don't want a, you know, a pretty book with pictures and descriptions, then you can get the spreadsheet.
Yeah, pay for the whiteboard.
And pay.
Well, next year, we, you know, we gotta do a, a more, start earlier and do more thorough input. And it's gonna cost us money, now we just threw something together, and it turned out okay, but it's not what I would really say.
I wouldn't say we just threw something together.
No, no, I know, but.
A lot of thought and work went into it.
That was just a phrase.
No.
I know, I know. Compared to a book.
But compared to what we had to work with?
Yeah.
We know what you meant.
You know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean there was.
No, I know.
You remember last month, we were throwing stuff together, and you guys were trying to sort it out. I mean, you did a fabulous job of what we had, but I know myself, and I'm sure Dawn would say the same thing, we need to start probably in October or before, and get this thing going and have it done by March.
Yeah, if it's gonna continue to be your responsibility, you want to do it in a professional way, rather than just.
And it's supposed to, everything that's on that CIP is supposed to, it's supposed to jive with what's in the master plan.
Exactly.
And right now, I, we don't necessarily know that it.
Well, we don't have the updated master plan.
No, we want to do it the right way next year. I mean, it, it turned out, for the time we had and what we got, we got a lot of information, you guys did a good job of pulling together.
Next year, we'll have the amended, updated master plan.
Right.
And the land use plans and all of that. So that can be the baseline for the CIP.
So hopefully, we can do a better professional job and hopefully have somebody pull it all together for us.
Right.
Like we do the master plan.
Like we started early with that, you started with that.
And then we would pull it together, and it depends on, you know, how much of a booklet they want, or presentation they want, you know. And I would suggest we get somebody like Denise Klein or another organization that, to pull it together, so it looks presentable. You know, we are the township of excellence, so we need to look that way when we present it to the, to the, you know, the public, is what I'm saying.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so then, so then, printing and publishing, I know there has to be, I'm gonna leave, we should leave that seven fifty in there, because we already know there's gonna have to be hearings for the master plan, we know that, so that's publishing. And I think there's printing for trailers, that kind of stuff, so we'll leave that. Education and training, we only burned sixty dollars, and that was me, but we have new people. And plus, it wouldn't hurt all of us to maybe take, some of the MTA has some courses, and I know you sent a thing a few weeks back, that the MTA was having something, someplace on planning, planning and zoning.
So, do you suggest sixty bucks times seven people? Three hundred and fifty bucks?
I'm saying leave the whole five hundred.
Okay.
Cause that sixty bucks was, that was kind of a cheap deal with Michigan, uh, uh, Michigan State extension.
So we're gonna put twenty-eight thousand in for the planning commission expense.
Yep.
Seven fifty for the print and publishing, five hundred for training.
Yep.
And then anything else?
The per diem, that would just stay as.
Stay zero.
Stay as zero, because we, we didn't, we voted before not to take.
Right, yeah, we don't take anything.
Yeah.
As long as the rest of them. Oh, no comment, I mean.
Come on, we're almost done.
All right, yeah.
All right.
So. It's over at twenty-nine. Two fifty, I think, if I, that's right.
So the only thing that was changed was the planning commission.
Right, we bumped that up from twenty-four thousand to twenty-eight thousand, based on some of the things that might be needed next year with the ME-CD and.
Okay.
So we would budget twenty-nine thousand, two fifty.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the adjusted budget.
I second, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, then we'll submit this to the, I don't know when they want their budget stuff, but.
Wasn't it by May first, didn't we have to have the budget, the stuff that submitted to them by May first?
It's pretty quick, I, I don't know when their meetings are scheduled, they're not on the calendar for their budget meetings, but.
Well, whenever we get it done, the next week or so, I guess I would send it in to them, tell them this is what we got.
Yep.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've gone through everything. Is there any board comments?
Public comments first.
Public comments.
Oh, yeah, we forgot, we got a person.
Yeah, where's the podium?
All right, actually, I've got two today.
Okay, we won't cut you off for three minutes.
Yeah, I think they all fit within the three minutes. Okay, my name's Patrick D. McGinnis. Yesterday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, at the Tuscoror Township Special Meeting, Mr. Chris Brown made some comments during the public comment portion of the meeting. I feel that Mr. Brown's statements are incorrect. First, Mr. Brown said he is the president of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I believe that he was removed as president after the Board of Directors held a vote to remove him from that position. Second, Mr. Brown said that the chamber director was harassed by, in quotes, "three goons" with the help of a rogue police officer, unquote, when they wanted to deliver a letter confirming that Mr. Brown was removed as president of the bureau. Mr. Brown was present during this incident, but would not come out of an office. I watched the video recorded by the police officer's body cam, and at no time did the police officer or the three individuals conduct themselves in any manner other than a very professional and polite manner. They did this while facing unwilling individuals. The four people who were there to deliver a letter of removal were also recorded by the chamber director. I wonder if her recording shows something other than what the police body cam shows. I often speak at public meetings held in Tuscoror Township, but I also try to be factual in my statements. I've never made up a story just to make a point, thank you.
I have one question. And was it the chamber director, or was it the tourist bureau president they were trying to remove?
They were trying to remove the tourist bureau.
Okay.
The chamber director would, was the one who was told to go out of the office and play.
Okay, see, I heard different, I'm glad you brought it, I'm glad you corrected that.
And, and she didn't even want to come out.
Okay.
She was directed.
Cause I heard other versions, so.
No, I've watched the tape and I've also read the transcript.
Okay, that makes sense.
Could you say that again? The purpose was to remove.
Chris Brown as president of the Tourists and Visitors Bureau.
Okay.
I think he had already been removed, and they were there to deliver a letter to the chamber,
Saying they had a vague statement.
stating that the contract between the bureau, the tourist bureau and the chamber was, was no longer, can't sign their contract.
But wouldn't that have to do with, like, the issue with, between the tourist bureau and nobody else? I mean, why would the township?
No, he, so they went, I had, I actually had the body cam filmed. They went, the three of them and the police officer went to the chamber office to deliver paperwork that was breaking the contract between the chamber and the, the tourist bureau.
Tourist bureau.
And to tell her that she needed to get all the paperwork that she had for the tourist bureau around, so they could pick it up.
So it was a, it was between the tourist bureau and the.
Chamber.
Essentially, the tourist bureau, they get rid of the person.
She was, yeah, and she was.
Okay, she was caught in the middle.
Well, she was, and she was at the, remember, she was the director over both.
I know.
And the contract made her director over both, so they were breaking that contract.
Okay.
And in, in the, in the tape, they said that they had a special board meeting of the, the tourist bureau. And at which time, they had removed Chris Brown as president, and the vice president had also been.
All I wanted was a clarification, I guess we don't need, as a planning commission, we don't need to get involved, but again, it's not. But again, it's, to me, it's, it's not a township, per se, board or planning commission or anything.
Well, it is, affects the township, because they were disparaging the, calling one of the police officers a rogue.
No, I understand, they should have, okay. Thank you.
And one other, one other.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, Jay Resma, or his representative, posted a resolution to approve the addition of Michigan Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System as an approved investment option. This resolution shows that it passed by a three-to-zero vote. A's were Resma, Kramer, Vance, nays were none, as the resolution showed Supervisor Mike Ridley and Treasurer. Nays were none, as the resolution showed Supervisor Mike Ridley and Treasurer Bobby Velazovic were absent. This is absolutely amazing because this is done the day before the scheduled meeting on the twentieth of April at three-thirty P M. So no vote could have been taken or people be absent before a scheduled meeting. This leaves open the following questions. One, was there a violation of an Open Meetings Act? Two, was there a round robin performed? Three, was a fake document presented as an official document? All three of the options above are against the law, in my opinion. This resolution is only the most current example of what Mike and Bobby have been going through and is one of the types of actions committed by the other three members. After this notice was posted by the township and then appeared on Tuscor Talks Back, the notice of the special meeting was canceled by the township. The damage was done by this time. Maybe Mike and Bobby do not want to be swept up in an individual, an official investigation. People are watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay.
What comment?
You have a board?
I have one.
All right, John.
Just, just on ordinance forty, it's the legal and opinions I always get on things. Um, ordinance forty is pretty clear that you have to have it based on state law. So regardless of what our lawyer says, the state law ultimately could force us into ordinance forty. That's only on the common. They can do what they want, but this ultimately will supersede anything that they say right now, I think.
Well, if you read the state law, it says, it basically says, if you're operating as a planning commission, you have to follow these rules.
Well, that's why we pay a lawyer supposedly to sort that out. I mean, we read it that way, Dawn read it that way, and that's why she wrote it up, you know, because we wanted to be in compliance. But apparently, uh, other people in the township thought we were overstepping our powers.
The only way to make the comments, a preview of coming events that could happen if somebody pushed.
Well, the only thing that, you know, we, hopefully Matt, uh, the lawyer will sort through it and, uh, he can give us an explanation why if he didn't accept their ordinance. It really doesn't say anything more than what our bylaws say.
The thing is, it's not up to us, we can present the ordinance to the board and recommend they pass it because this is what public law says.
Right.
Then they can take that and discuss with the attorney or whatever, and they make the decision to accept it or to vote on, approve the right ordinance.
Bob had agreed to do, that he would take it, look at it, send it to.
As a planning commission, we create, you know, presented, approved the ordinance and sent it to the township for their approval. What they do, we don't have any control over.
Exactly, because we, eventually, we ultimately report through the township board.
Yep.
Even though, you know.
They're the ones that have to pass the ordinance.
Right.
We recommend it, they pass it.
The only reason that it's important is because we all have to, uh, we're going to have to adopt a resolution per that law. We're going to have to adopt, to accept this master plan and I.
That's right, Larry, I was, that's, that's exactly where I was coming.
I don't want it, I don't, yeah.
This question of this ordinance forty has to be solved before we ever can adopt the master plan. And there's a timeframe in which we have to get this master plan finished.
Yeah.
Well, that's why.
And, and so they can't be dragging their heels, trying to figure out.
Resolution.
Have the, have the.
Yeah, they were not going to do that. Bob was going to try and get it resolved, because I told him the same thing about the master plan, we need to get it solved. For some reason, like I said, they felt that we were overstepping our powers, but, so he had agreed to send our ordinance forty revised in his resolution, uh, which doesn't say a whole lot, but, uh, to the lawyer. And he told me in an email that Matt, the lawyer, said that he would favor the resolution, but he wanted to look at both of them, so. If we have our own input, that's what I would tell him.
But the, the point is, as a planning commission, we sign off on the master plan. And we say, it sits right there on the front page.
This is going to be a.
So if it comes back, no ordinance, then we have to decide whether we sign off on it.
Exactly, that's exactly right. I mean, do we put ourselves in jeopardy?
No.
I would say no.
I would say that's a hard no right there.
So again, that's something we have to.
It isn't high enough to cheat.
Come to, you know, when we get the master plan done. You missed all the fireworks, all the public comments.
Okay.
So, now, we were talking about the ordinance forty, you know, John had said, we have to get it approved. I mean, that's what the law says.
Yeah.
And, and according to Bob, he's saying that, you know, he's leaving it up to the lawyer, Matt. And Matt, he said, was favoring the, the resolution, but we're saying, when it gets down to the end of this master plan for us signing off, we're going to have to make a choice, because the law says we're supposed to be under ordinance forty. And then they're, they're going to have to make the decision, you know, at the end of this, what, you know, what are we going to do? Because if we don't sign off of it, because we don't have that ordinance forty, and that's going to be our choice to do that, then they'll have to make a choice of what they want it to be.
I, personally, I feel if, if I have an attorney's opinion that says it's okay for you to sign off on this without having an ordinance by doing a resolution, I, I'm okay with that, because I have an attorney's opinion, even if I don't like the attorney's opinion, I still have it. That's my training has been, you don't question your attorney's opinion.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, so I'm hoping that he takes a good look at the ordinance forty and sees it kind of mirrors a resolution but goes in more detail, more like a bylaws now.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion, unless there's any more comments, I make a motion, we adjourn.